Would you lead us in that?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It says we're going to have roll call at this point. Oh, we don't have a... Yes, we do. No, we don't.
If you're not here, please say so.
Is there's... Where's our... We don't have a clerk.
I'm here.
All right, well...
I'm here.
I think we better wait for Andy. I'm gonna turn on the speaker.
Yeah, I think you can just put in the public record that all the planning commissioners are here and accounted for.
Just go down the line?
Yeah.
We'll wait. We can afford a minute.
You want me to start the update or you want to wait a minute?
Why don't we wait till the clerk lets her?
Okay.
I didn't hear you guys back there. So whatever you guys were saying, roll call. Mr. Gray.
Present.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Ricucci.
Here.
Mr. Denio.
Here.
Mr. Settison.
Here.
We have a quorum. Report from the planning director? Do you have any report?
Yeah, I have a quick report for you before we move on to the first item. So, George Zasozka, supervising planner, Placer County Planning. The first thing I'd like to talk to you about, the first item on the agenda, camel's hump. The staff is requesting a continuance to either February 27th or March 13th. Our recommendation is February 27th and then we will call off the March 13th hearing, if that's the date, although it is your decision. Recent board actions. You may have heard about the interim ordinance prohibiting certain uses within the specific plan area in Tahoe City, Kings Beach. You may have heard about that. You may have heard it too about Tahoe Moratorium, referred to it that way. That was unanimously rejected by the Board of Supervisors at their January 21st meeting. February 4th, heard an update on the Placer County Conservation Plan and approved three related contract amendments. Upcoming board meetings. February 25th, the board will consider the planning commission's recommendation on transitional and supportive housing zoning text amendments. Also, we received an appeal from the Friends of North Fork of the planning commission's approval of the Belcara subdivision. The appeal hearing is tentatively scheduled for March 11th, 2014, at the board meeting in Tahoe. The last bit of news, you know Paul has left for Tahoe and we were without a deputy director. We have a new one. You may have met him. His name is E.J. Evaldi. Do you know E.J.? He's the new deputy director, so you will be seeing him at these planning commission hearings in the future. So other than that, I don't have anything unless you have any questions for me.
George?
Yes.
I think the March 11th board meeting is here in Auburn, isn't it?
My notes say that in Tahoe.
Oh, okay.
But it could be in Auburn. It could be in Tahoe. I will get back to you on that.
And that's the board's meeting you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you say we're gonna have a meeting on the 27th? George, we're gonna have a meeting on the 27th of this month?
Right. Staff is... Well, at this point, it's up to you. We are recommending that the camel's hump, the first item, to correct the deficiency in the noticing. Staff is recommending that we continue it to February 27th. You have the option of continuing it to March 13th. The actually, the appellant, Friends of North Fork...
George, I hate to interrupt. Perhaps we should call this item into the record and then we can discuss it in detail because I think that will answer Commissioner Ricucci's questions.
Right. It's probably we can have that discussion when we get to camel's hump.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else other than...
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
One point of update for the commissioners.
So, George, just a question. You were talking about the zoning change request that was an emergency zoning change request for the Tahoe area?
Yes.
And, of course, supervisors acted, but at any rate, you know, maybe you don't want to, but could you go into a little background about how that came about or what, you know, what the concern was that the planning department was expressing?
Yeah, I only have a cursory understanding of what happened. I was not involved in that Tahoe issue. I can tell you what my understanding is from watching the hearing and that sort of thing. My understanding is that, you know, we're going through a Kings Beach community plan area update. There are several pieces of property that have been slated as part of that visioning process that's going on for uses like hotels and some uses of that nature, like larger hotels. One was the Ferrari piece of property. I think it's called Ferrari the Jewel or Crown.
Crown Motel.
The Crown. It's the Crown Motel. And that was slated for one of the areas that was acceptable for a large type resort type uses right on the lake, that sort of thing. That's what the vision was. Staff became aware that there was maybe an alternative use that was gonna be proposed on that, which, under our current standards, would be allowed with very little discretionary review, basically a design review. And it was a school. And so, and this is the part I'm shaking on. A moratorium came forward. I don't exactly know where it started or how it came to be, but it did come forward to the board and asking them to put a moratorium to prohibit land uses generally in that area from moving forward until the Kings Beach Community Plan was done. That's my cursory understanding of it.
The ordinance would have included not only Kings Beach, but Tahoe City as well.
Yes. Thank you.
It was pretty much all encompassing of the area.
Yeah, because there's community plans going there and basically it was to put a stop on it until all of those plans were updated.
And there was a sale pending. You know, the escrow had been opened and it was close to closing and this would have probably put a stop to it so the board in their discretion chose to...
Yeah, I guess it's a little confusing because normally zoning changes would come through a process and it seemed like this didn't follow that process.
That was an emergency thing.
Yeah, it was an emergency ordinance.
Brought it forward as an emergency ordinance.
It's the same process they use for the community centers. The community center moratorium that was put into place for 22 months. It was the same. It was that same process.
Interim ordinances are governed under a separate section of the government code. Zoning text amendments, which are also ordinance, has always come to the planning commission and go forward with the recommendation of the board. An interim ordinance by its nature is considered to be more of an urgency matter and it goes forward directly to the Board of Supervisors.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. I was there, so if you had any other questions, what?
Well, it seemed like it was pretty contentious on the... As far as, you know, the staff's recommendation.
Well, I suspect staff thought that we were doing the right thing by encouraging what would have been probably a more appropriate use in the area, but because this family had owned it since the 20s or 30s and wanted to sell it and they're desperate why the board felt it was a little ambitious by the staff to deny them that use.
Okay, well, that's probably enough said.
Okay, thanks, George.
Thank you.
The one thing I wanted to update this commission on is some of the commissioners, not all, will recall back in 2008, you considered and approved the regional university specific plan. It was litigated and that litigation has now settled and we'll see what moves forward with that particular project, but in a long time.
Was it settled without... Was it resolved without changes?
Save a lot of money.
The changes that were made were very similar to what the commission... No, I don't believe the commission did see it. Very similar to what happened with Placer Vineyards. The settlement was an augmentation and an expansion of the mitigation measures for biological open space and ag resources. And it came back to the board for amendment of the mitigation monitoring reporting program to incorporate that new mitigation. And that was the basis of the settlement.
Seems like we do an awful lot to get just a little sometimes, don't we?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the planning commission on something, anything other than things on the agenda? No agenda items?
Yes, Michael Garabedian, Friends of the North Fork. What I would like to explore with you in general, entirely in general, is what your procedures are when an appellant or a member of the public wants to present a PowerPoint on an item on the agenda. We came here today, our person came down from 4,000 feet who's working on a PowerPoint, and we had hoped to be able to plug it in and see if it works. Not necessarily before you, maybe after the meeting or something like that, but so the general question is, what is the process of being able to show a PowerPoint?
Well, that's just a computer thing, I guess, maybe, George?
Normally what happens is staff would receive the PowerPoint prior to the hearing and then we would review it. We wouldn't edit it or change it in any way unless we might send it back if there was something completely inappropriate in it and say, "This is really not appropriate," but we wouldn't edit it. But we would look at it, check it, make sure it works. I can see after the hearing today if there is someone who I can bring in here and have them check to see if their PowerPoint will work. If it's a standard... Is it a standard PowerPoint on a flash drive? I'm fairly certain that it should just start up with no problem, but I'm happy after the hearing to have it checked. But if they actually want to present it at the hearing, then it needs to come to us in time so we can look at it to make sure that there's not something inappropriate on it.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Yep.
How soon in advance? Any rough idea or ballpark?
The sooner the better. At least... Kathy, do you know a timeframe?
Forty-eight hours prior to the hearing would be best. I just talked with Shirley.
Forty-eight hours? If you get it to us a week, though, it would be good, too.
Yeah, we go to Shirley Harrington?
Yes. Can I give you her card?
Could we be able to email it to her or do we need to bring in the...
Email would be great.
Email would probably be much more practical.
But if we want to test it, we would maybe have to do that today, it sounds like. Thank you.
If I can find someone, I'll bring someone in to set it up and see if it works.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing no one, then we'll move on to our 10:05 item, which is a third-party appeal, minor use permit, camel's hump caretake residence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, maybe I can start out first. It was discovered after this was noticed for this particular agenda that there was a defect in the legal notice. As a result, our office determined that it cannot be legally heard today. It needs to be continued to a date certain in order to allow staff to renotice it. The date, of course, is up for discussion between the planning commission and the appellant as to what date would be mutually convenient. Unfortunately, the applicant is not here, but I understand the applicant is aware and understands and occurs that there will be a continuance. Therefore, the only issue that should be discussed today regarding this item is what date should it be continued to?
Okay, thank you. And do you have a preference as staff?
Staff is recommending February 27th, 2014.
February 27th. Okay.
I'm gonna be gone February 27th, so I won't be...
And I think I'm at TRPA that day, so...
And we should check with... In the case of not having a full commission, we should be checking with the applicant. The applicant certainly has the right to ask for a full commission for this appeal hearing. So I'm hearing two would be gone for the 27th. We might want to hear from the appellant as to how they feel about a partial commission on that date and whether appellant would prefer a different date when a full commission is here.
Yeah, I'll be gone on the 27th also and I would like to be at this hearing if possible.
Okay.
Well, the 13th is the alternate date that was proposed. How many of you can make it to the 13th?
I'll be here for the 13th. I'd be here for the 13th.
I won't be, but we'll have six out of the seven, which is not a bad average.
I recommend we hear from the appellant at this point. We now have a situation of having a five-member commission for the 27th, a six-member commission for the 13th. Kathy, what's the next?
I think it's less than five on the...
I think it's four on the first.
Pardon me, stand corrected.
You can be here the 13th?
Pardon me, so it's four for...
I'm here the 13th, but not the 27th.
Do you all be here the 27th?
I won't be.
No.
So we have four members on the 27th?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have... How many members will be here on the 13th?
I think six.
Six, okay. I'd recommend maybe we now hear from the appellant because really the appellant does have the right to ask for full commission.
Okay. Would the appellant care to come forward and give us his name or their name and...
Yes, the appellant is Friends of the North Fork and I'm Michael Garabedian. Since the staff had recommended the 27th, which we would have agreed with except for the short panel, maybe we should consult with the staff again to see if they have an alternate recommendation for you and then come back a little later or something.
Well, they have the 13th as their alternate recommendation.
Well, they haven't recommended it, have they?
Yeah. We had two possible dates, February 27th or March 13th. And whatever hearing this goes to, we probably will not hold the other one. So February 27th would probably not be held, especially in light of the lack of planning commissioners who are able to attend.
Well, I don't think we'd want to go before a short commission, but even prior to that, as staff is well aware, we object to the 13th because that is the same week that the Belcara subdivision is scheduled on Tuesday before the Board of Supervisors. And that is just not a fair load to have two appeals in the same week. But the short board also is an independent reason, I think, to say the 13th is not acceptable.
No, the short board would be on the 27th, not the 13th.
No, there's one on the 13th as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, both days are short boards.
Well, I guess that sounds like we need to find a third date or a fourth date or something.
We should probably check with Kathy to see what the next date is.
The 27th of March would be the next one.
Are all the commissioners here on the 27th?
They'll stomp on it. Your garage door should be open or something.
How about the 27th for everybody?
Of March?
Of March.
3/27? I won't be here for that, but...
Where are you all, Mr. Keith?
I am taking a vacation.
A long one?
A long one. The 27th of this month, I have TRPA, which is another county responsibility that I can't walk away from, so... But I'm gonna be gone.
The month of March.
I'll be back in April. End of April, possibly. The last meeting in April.
But that... You know, I'm not sure that I'm critical to this.
And not knowing what anybody else's future schedule is, at some point, the person who's actually proposing the project and their timeline, does that enter into this at all? We gonna put them on hold indefinitely till we can get all seven of us here or...
What about continuing it to an open date for now and see what the applicant's concerns might be and how to address them? You know, they may want... I'm sorry this naffoo came today because that...
Well, is the appellant absolutely wants a full committee for this?
Well, I have to talk to our board, but the 13th is out for two reasons. The March 13th doesn't work for two reasons. The date after that, I don't know. We'd like to...
The 27th of March?
I'd like to consult about that. There'd be one absence?
One.
Just one?
On the 27th.
So...
Why don't we try... How about this? If the commission would continue this off calendar with the understanding on the record that appellant agrees to let us know within what's reasonable, Mr. Garabedian, forty-eight hours of your board?
Well, I think we'd want to hear from the applicant, too.
Well, yes, but we'd want to hear from you within a finite period of time as to whether the second date in March is... Will be acceptable with your board with one commissioner gone.
Ten days?
How about by Tuesday?
Here's the issue, and this is why I would recommend that we just choose a date and move forward. I know that the applicants would very much like to move this forward. They're interested in resolution one way or the other with regard to their project and the appeal that's been filed by Friends of the North Fork. The concern that I have is the same as Mr. Moss. If we keep moving it forward and moving it forward and moving it forward, it just... There's no resolution. I mean, it is up to you. I would prefer to pick a date specific and then if there's a problem, we can work back from that instead of just leaving it open-ended. Yeah. I think that's a better solution. It's like, pick a date. If we have a major issue with that date, then we can take a step back, just like we did on this one, and talk about something different.
Can we have a special meeting?
I won't be here, but...
Can we not have it on a Thursday and have a special meeting and just to address this issue?
Yeah, I believe you. It's... That's well within your purview. If you want to have a special meeting, that's fine.
Yeah, it will still be minus one person.
Well, not necessarily. No, not if you pick a date when everybody's available.
Well, he's gonna be...
Larry will be gone that day.
My first date I'm available that we could have a meeting will be Friday, the 25th of April.
With the full board.
And I could be...
Well, if we have to do a 10-day notice, or you... 10 days from now.
But I'm... I got TRPA for two days. They come home here.
How long are you gone, Ken?
I'm gone two weeks. I'm back April, March, so that's why the first meeting that you're...
Yeah. It's really up to the commission. I mean, the appellant can ask for a full commission. It doesn't necessarily mean that he will receive the full commission. That's your decision. And if he is completely disgruntled with that, he has further administrative remedies beyond you.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we schedule it for the 13th and if it can be worked out between the appellant and the applicant to push that back to a specific date beyond that, that we would, I think, be willing to accommodate that. But for a date specific, the 13th, I think, has all of us but one here.
But one, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, just be one missing, yeah. And that's...
It seems like the trouble is the further we go out in the future, if we're trying to get a seven-person commission, that becomes more difficult because it's, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of reasons why in April...
You pick up one and you lose two, huh?
Right. So if we know we got six on the 13th, then maybe what Jeffrey's recommendation is would be a good thing and then...
Well, the appellant doesn't like it, though.
Well, what... Sir, if it's time for me to talk, just let me know.
Okay. Well, it's up to you. What do you guys think?
What did you just say?
I said that when it's time for me to talk, let me know.
Oh.
The 13th isn't good for them already, correct? So the 27th is the next one. Unless we follow the idea that it doesn't have to be the 13th or the 27th. It could be the 16th. It could be the 5th. It could be the 4th. We get to decide when, when our schedules allow for it. That could convenience these guys as well as the applicant.
Is that correct?
So we can pick a date. Doesn't have to be the 13th. It could be the 12th. It could be the 14th.
Well, Mr. Garabedian, you were saying that you have another appeal going on within a couple of days of the 13th and that you're kind of overloaded to accommodate them both. How much time? How much of a break would be acceptable to you to be able to accommodate them both?
Well, it was more than acceptable to have this two-week, the change to the 27th, which won't work. But we heard... I heard an idea suggested that would work for us, and that is the 27th of March with the possibility of changing it. But I don't see why it shouldn't. I think the applicant's input is essential and, you know, to make this kind of decision. So the idea of setting the 27th, which doesn't have a conflict, as far as we know, with any other matters, would be the way to go.
It's 3/27.
What about if we did it on the 20th? Just a week after that gives them some time with their other issue and then we just have... I don't know what other things are gonna come before the commission during March, but that pushes it off a week and then just have one meeting in March?
It seems that, you know, there's downsides that goes with having special commission meetings, you know, not on a regular dates because, you know, I don't know. I'm just thinking of the planning department. They try to bunch out issues around the meetings and make it more economical for the county to conduct the meetings. And so I guess I would be a little reluctant to pick just a special hearing date for this unless, say, the 27th isn't gonna work for the person with the project or the appellant, then we may have to go to that. But at any rate, it seems like it would be more expedient to pick a regular meeting date.
I think the other reason to pick a regular meeting date at this point is the applicant is not here. And I agree with Mr. Garabedian. It's obviously critical that the applicant is available on that date. And it always gets a little more difficult when you're talking about a special hearing date. I think I agree with... I don't think. I agree with George that perhaps what I'm hearing, the date that seems to be acceptable, tentatively acceptable at this point is the 27th of March with the understanding that we'll be checking with the applicant to ensure the applicant is available. The appellant knows at this point that there will only be a six-member commission. However, it sounds like that particular situation will last through April and it may not be acceptable to the applicant to wait until May to have the appeal heard. So if that's what the commission would want to consider, I think it's probably a good solution at this point in time.
Okay.
I'd make that as a motion.
Hold a second.
We have a motion and a second to make the... March 27th is the next date to hear this. And if there's no other discussion about that, we'll have roll call, please.
What if the applicant has a problem with that? What's the alternative?
Then we'll go to May. I think it was...
Well, can... At that point, if there's an issue, we'll have it on the agenda to discuss a second continuance request.
I wouldn't think they'd want to push it out further if they're anxious to get this going, so I'm sure they'd be disappointed by that.
Kathy?
Yes. I'm just all clustered today.
Get organized.
Mr. Gray?
Hi.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Settison?
Yes. Okay, so this hearing has been continued to March 27th at a time to be determined, I guess?
10 o'clock?
Yes. 10 o'clock or 10:05 or something close to that.
Do we have a specific time, Kathy, at this point?
We can do 10:05. We have to renotice it anyways, but 10:05's good.
Okay. 10:05.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we have a few minutes.
Nope.
No, we don't. No, we don't, we can keep going.
We're on a roll. You delayed long enough, Mr. Chairman.
Just loose lips, safe tips or something?
Kathy?
Yes.
Did you, did you see, I, did you get that thing that you wanted from the last meeting, the list of people that testified? I sent it down from...
Came via...
Oh, you did, yeah, okay. I didn't know what else to do. I was coming down, so. And yeah, I gave you my contact is interesting there, too. In your hand, in that manila envelope.
Oh, is this, this is, gotcha. I hadn't looked at that one. Got to get it. Okay, all that's...
It's such a big day, you got a lot going on here.
It's our Monday.
Okay. We're gonna have an ordinance temporarily allowing certain prohibited signs. All supervisory districts. Lisa, morning.
Good morning, and happy early Valentine's Day to you all. Yes, the proposed ordinance, at the request of the Board of Supervisors, the planning department is proposing this ordinance, which is a revisitation of the previous ordinance that was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors back in 2011, would allow, would suspend time restrictions for window signs and temporary sales and event signs, and temporarily suspend select prohibitions for A-frame signs, inflated or lighter-than-air signs, and portable signs. Proposed ordinance is recommended be in effect till October 18th of 2015, and that's to coincide with the temporary ordinance that's in place by the city of Roseville. Benefits, obviously, are to the businesses, to allow them to continue to garner more activity for their businesses during this time when the economy is recovering. But there are prohibitions that are in place to limit the number, the size, where they can be put, so to make sure that it doesn't get cluttered, and that, make sure that aesthetically and its also safety issues are addressed. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that to find this action exempt from further review pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the CEQA guidelines pursuant to the findings listed within the SAF report, and approve the proposed ordinance to temporarily suspend certain time restrictions and select prohibitions for the particular signs and sign materials found in the sign regulations as set forth in 17.54.170, the zoning ordinance, until October 18th of 2015. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, yeah, just, just a real quick question. The staff report indicates that the supervisors are really kind of encouraging this to come before the Planning Commission and ultimately to the supervisors. I guess, I guess the only question I'd have is in terms of complaints or problems that have come up from this ordinance? Have there been any?
In checking with code enforcement, there's been a few complaints. Those have been addressed by code enforcement. They go out and if they check to make sure that the sign is within the limitations, and if it's not, they act upon it and address the situation and talk to the owners and either have the sign removed, have it minimized to fit within the prohibitions. But as of recent time, there hasn't been a lot of things that have come up from the public, any complaints.
Okay, is it likely that this will become a permanent change, or?
That's something that the bigger powers that be have to decide as where we're going with this in, in the future, whether we'll continue to extend this, or at some point in time, once the economy's back up, if we will, you know, ratchet it back down to what our sign ordinance has been, that's...
Well, it seems like the economy is kind of an abstract term in itself, you know, when the, when the economy's good and when the economy is bad.
Right.
It's kind of abstract in terms of the eyes of the beholder. So, I don't know, I guess...
It's one of those, it's somebody else is gonna need to decide, you know, where we're going within the planning department, whether we, like I say, go back to what we've had, or whether we decide to go forward with a formal amendment. But that's unclear at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yeah. A little confusing who the power to be that's gonna pull the trigger, but...
Wayne?
No, I was gonna say Jeff, and then I'd like to say something.
Oh, good, yeah.
The October date that you said, Lisa, that was just to coincide with Roseville's?
Yeah, the city of Roseville has a temporary A-frame.
So we would have the ability, as we work on this, to change that date? I mean, that's right in the middle of the retail season. I mean, let's make it the end of the year or something, while people are trying to go for, for, you know, right after the holiday rush kind of thing. I would think if we're doing this to benefit the small businesses that are trying to survive, we ought to leave it through, through Christmas.
That's certainly within your purview.
We'll make that part of the recommendation if you choose to, I guess. Okay.
My question is for George. In our update on, you know, planning sort of things that are going on, on the countywide, it said that there's, you've been working on, I guess, or through your group, on animated and illuminated signs, and it's gonna come before the Planning Commission. What's the timing of that?
Yeah, we've actually taken that to the MACS. And it's, it's, it's a ordinance to deal with animated and movable signs. What it really is, if you've seen the new LED signs that are like in Rockland and that sort of thing, we're gonna bring an ordinance forward that deals with that. Right now, the ordinance is slated to ask or recommend to the commission that we prohibit the use of those types of signage, signage, signs?
Within the county.
I'm just saying, that is what we're, we're going to bring forward. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we'll shake out of the whole thing, but that's where we're at. And that should be coming to you hopefully, hopefully this spring. It's gotten, it's gotten put on the back burner a little bit, where we've been going through the winery ordinance and the community plan, zoning text amendments and that sort of thing. But that will be coming back to you in the springtime.
Those type of signs are currently prohibited, right, in the county?
Well... It's, it's, it was never an issue with regard, because the signs, the cost of these signs was hugely prohibitive. Our ordinance is not exceedingly clear on whether we can or cannot do this. By interpretation, we have told people that you can't do this. But when you make interpretations, you know, as staff members, we're obligated to bring those things forward so we can get an actual, what do, how do we actually want to handle this? And that's why we're bringing it forward in zoning text amendment or ordinance form, so we can decide what the appropriate way to move forward with these types of signs is.
If that's the case, how did Sutter Hospital here in town get that?
That's a lengthy discussion. Would you like to have that right now?
But I'm trying to figure that out, how all this fits together in helping promote business.
It is, it is, it is lengthy, and I could talk about that for a long time. But that was part of the catalyst of starting, bringing it forward. As I, as I, I'll give you in a nutshell. As I said, our ordinance is, is unclear with regard to these types of signs, okay? There was some internal confusion with regard to how our ordinance read and the sign at Sutter was installed. And that's really what spurred this forward, is so that we can remove that confusion. So we have a clear path forward with regard to these, whether we allow them or whether we don't allow them, just a clear path forward, and that's what we're bringing forward.
Are you hearing from the MACS that they don't like those kind of signs?
Generally speaking, of all the MACS that I went to, the only MAC, and Commissioner Moss will appreciate this, where someone, where someone spoke that instead of prohibiting them, we should consider ways to regulate them, was some of the members on the Granite Bay MAC. The MAC as a whole voted to prohibit it, but some of the members of the Granite Bay MAC thought that maybe we should move forward in such a fashion as to regulate these and not prohibit them. The rest of the MACS that I went to, I don't know the number off the top of my head, they recommended their prohibition.
They, they're not allowed at Tahoe, so we don't, we don't have a dog in the race.
Right, this ordinance would, would not extend into the Tahoe area.
Or Squaw Valley, I was...
Yeah, Squaw Valley or the Tahoe Basin.
Okay.
It seems like we're maybe a little bit off.
We are off.
Off topic here, but...
But it's all about promoting businesses, you know, allowing them to do, promoting the most efficient way possible.
Yeah, we have discussed this before, and probably we're not gonna resolve it now, but it seems to me, last time we discussed it, there was, there is the ability to screen them down so they're not so bright, and those types of things. So probably would be premature for us to...
Yeah, I just wanted to see the depth of it. That's all I wanted to find out.
I expect it'll be, it'll be fun. We'll have a good time figuring out what the best way to move forward with that.
Well, there was, it was suggested that we use some other date than, what, the 18th is suggested?
Make it January 15th or the 16th.
Yeah, first of the year.
Mid-January, then?
Well, maybe, maybe let's think about it again, rethink that. Maybe it should be less than the 18th, maybe it should only be Labor Day, simply because what we're doing is we're changing what's there now. We need all the summer for it to go through, so all the neighbors who can look at this visual pollution say, hey, we'd like this even less than what you had before. Let's get rid of it before it ruins our Christmas. So there's just as much argument to stop it.
You would have a hole when you couldn't have anything if you continued it out. I think you're right, it should be brought back, so they overlap. Otherwise, you're gonna have a time when you don't, you can't have anything. Because there'd be no ordinance to implement, allow it to be implemented. Is that, is that right, George?
The current ordinance doesn't allow these. We're going to temporarily allow them to a date specific. I'm just thinking that, that if it's meant to help the retailers, we should go into their biggest, you know, retail season.
Right, but, and I'm arguing that it shouldn't be. We aren't here to try to improve the economy, which is a very nebulous thing. We're here to make sure that this ordinance doesn't affect everybody, or it does affect everybody equally, so that the neighbors who have to look at this new sign say, hey, I didn't complain before because it wasn't like this before. Now I want to complain, and I don't want it here all through the rest of the year. You've had it all summer, it didn't improve the economy at all, or it did improve the economy of your dinner house or whatever. So, no, I don't want it to go that long. That kind of argument is just as valid as continuing it.
With that kind of value, we just...
Correct me if I'm wrong on this. It's, it's not that we're saying that they can put stuff that isn't allowed now. It's allowed, but there's time limits on it, am I right?
Well, currently, the ordinance that was exactly the same as this expired June of 2013. So from then till now, we have been without this ordinance. We're recommending to put it back into play. So they, there has been this time lapse from June of 2013 to now, when it was not in place.
And during that time, has code enforcement been out enforcing this? Or have we just been kind of doing this, waiting for this ordinance to come up?
No, I can, I can answer that. Because we've known that this ordinance was coming forward, we have not been actively moving forward until resolution of this. And as Lisa alluded to earlier, we have not gotten a lot of complaints based on the relaxation. We have gotten some complaints about A-frames out near streets and that sort of thing, but by and large, not, not a lot of them.
So the issue would be that the ordinance would, the new, reinstating this ordinance would take place whenever we send it to the board and they act on it.
Correct.
From that point, to when? Now, you're saying...
That's the question before you...
October 18th, and there's been discussion about another date, some other date. Is the date critical from the staff's standpoint?
Well, it'd be better to have a recommended timeframe for the board, but...
But the only magic to the 18th was that it coincided with the Roseville ordinance.
Correct.
We don't need to follow that.
You know, I guess I'm still struggling.
That's a bad comment you just made, Jeffrey. I was trying to be nice to you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm still kind of struggling with the why. Why of this? And, you know, if we've had this in place for several years, then apparently the businesses, if they want to come forward with this again, think that it's a benefit to their business. And so why, you know, why are we even putting a deadline on it? Why, if they're okay, then why not just? So it seems like we ought to have a process in force if we're just gonna be continuing this temporary ordinance on into the future. Ought to have some kind of a process to...
Actually amend the...
Take, take a look and say if it's gonna be okay to permanently change the ordinance.
Well, it'll come October 18th.
Well, I mean, why stop it at October 8? You know, I'd be inclined to go with Jeffrey and say, well, let's do it after the Christmas season. But then, then we're back looking at a temporary ordinance again, I guess, if somebody doesn't think the economy's doing very good. And so, so what's the problem here? What are we, what are we solving?
Okay, well, let's, let's clarify first. The, the signs that are the subject of this particular ordinance are currently under the zoning code prohibited. This ordinance is essentially temporary allowing, temporarily allowing these signs for a very finite period of time, subject to the conditions that are outlined within the code. Now, to answer your question, Commissioner Johnson, yeah, the other option would be to do an amendment of the code, and that may come at some time, as Lisa said, if the board determines that they would like to look at permanent amendments to the code to allow one or, or several of these now prohibited signs. They most certainly can initiate that process. That's not the direction that staff has, has received from the board as of yet. The direction from the board is to continue the temporary allowance. That's why there is this date within the ordinance to say, these are only allowed for this period of time when this date comes, unless the ordinance is extended beyond that. Then it stops, and we go back to our regular ordinance where they're prohibited.
George, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I wanted, I wanted to say that there is nothing also prohibiting you from, on your recommendation, if you wanted to make as part of your recommendation that the board maybe consider making this a permanent change to the ordinance, you could also send that forward with your recommendation on the temporary relaxation of sign standards.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's kind of where I would come from, you know. I don't know if these signs are objectionable or some of the details behind it, but it seems like if we're just gonna keep rolling it over again, that maybe, at least a suggestion from us that the board consider a long-term change or changing the code.
And if the commission as a whole decides to send that recommendation up, it should be a separate recommendation from this ordinance, because that would be a separate process. We would, it would be a zoning text amendment that would go through on its normal route, so...
This, this is what's noticed, and this is what we can consider today.
Right.
I'm sorry?
This is what's noticed, and this is what we can consider.
But as George said, if you want to also send a recommendation to the board to, for the board to consider a separate zoning text amendment to allow on a permanent basis certain signs, you can certainly send that as a note to the board. But yes, you're right, the only thing that's before you today to act upon is this particular ordinance, which temporarily allows these signs.
Well, you know, I guess the only, I'm just thinking that, you know, it's, this is to benefit businesses. And if it's not making much difference and the businesses aren't promoting it, at least to bring it up publicly so that you get more of a public response to it, rather than just, and kind of an abstract, you know, we think the economy's bad, so let's continue it type thing, so. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's, that's what the purpose of putting in something on a temporary basis is, to get more input. And that was gonna be one of my comments. First of all, I think the staff did a good job. I just have two comments on, and concerns, and this is a sight visibility at intersections, which in Roseville, it, it's a problem, in my opinion. And also these A-frames on, on top of sidewalks, which is another safety. But my, my comment was gonna be that after whatever date we, we set this, that we get some kind of a feedback from staff, not only on the enforcement, but have the businesses really benefit, get their input. But we couldn't hire enough code enforcement officers to go out and take care of all the violations. So I think we need to have an outreach with the businesses. And maybe that's part of the staff's workload, is to, to say, listen, you better start, you better do somewhat of a decent job in self-enforcement, or else when the time comes later on, in a year and a half, if there's too many problems, you know, you may not get some of these signs on a permanent basis. So those are my comments. I have no problem with extending it to either October the 18th or January 1st of 2016 to beat Jeffrey's comment. Anyway, that, those are my comments.
Ricky?
Yes, question, Lisa. You say that the ordinance that was controlling the signs was over on June of 2013? Now, obviously, this doesn't cover all the signs, but simply the temporary signs that were, how did that work? Explain that to me. How, how come the ordinance ran out? What ordinance ran out?
It, the temporary ordinance that was identical to this...
Okay, so the, the temporary one only...
Addressed these same issues.
Right, so when it was over on the 13th, instead of code enforcement saying, okay, we're back to where we originally were, these signs are prohibited for certain reasons that have been in effect for whatever, but we're not gonna enforce that. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. I'll tell you what happened. When the sign, when the sign, temporary previous, previous sign ordinance ended, code enforcement started taking action on some of these prohibited signs. And when I say taking action, it was...
Hi, could you move it?
Yeah, it was phone calls, like, hey, you know, the prohibited sign... Yeah, it was phone calls, like, hey, you know, the prohibited sign, temporary relief is now over, could you please remove it? And we started systematically going through those. Then we heard that the Placerville County Planning Department Services Division would be moving forward with a request to again ask for a temporary relaxation of sign standards to go forward. And at that point, code enforcement decided that we would, we would wait until the resolution of this ordinance to continue forward.
Okay, so who put forward that idea that, okay, it's temporarily, this one we put in for the economy is over, but it could happen again, so who said that?
My understanding is that this was requested to be brought forward by the Board of Supervisors, that staff.
By the Board of Supervisors themselves?
That, that the request came from the board, and that staff prepared this again and bring it forward. That's my understanding.
This was, as I understand it, what Jeff's saying is that, okay, we're going to extend this ordinance through, say, January 1st, and that at this time, whoops, sorry, great, Rich, that we would collect information, say complaints about the signs, or businesses saying, oh, you know, the sign helped me a lot, and this would be used, this information would be gathered by staff, and then we would hear this, and then see if we want to perhaps make a permanent ordinance out of it, or we want to go back to what it was and say, these signs are still no good, they weren't good then, no matter what the economy is, great or bad, these aren't good signs, and then we make that recommendation to the board. Am I saying that right?
Well, I think the temporary signs here have to be, you know, just not a matter of making it, yeah, we ought to throw them in because we have no complaints, it's got to fit in the whole signing program, sign ordinance, it's not a standalone, we did it for the economy, I guess, but it's got to be.
That would make it temporary, that was the only.
It's got to be taken in full contact with staff's recommendation, do these people really, and what the business community input is, do they really need these on a permanent basis, and have they basically helped our businesses or not? Because if they don't, then they become clutter.
Exactly.
Haven't helped anybody.
Right.
And that's part of the sign ordinance, is not just to help businesses, but also to make the place look like a little better than, than it would be if we just had a proliferation of all these signs on a permanent basis, or more of them actually, too.
And I guess my question then becomes, why wasn't it just done at the very beginning? You said that these signs that aren't allowed now were aligned when this allowed, when the ordinance, this temporary ordinance was first passed. Anything, information about that gathered, I mean, was there any follow-up on that, or we just said, hey, we'll put this ordinance in, and then when it's up, it's up and we'll get back to it? Which is what we're doing, only we've been slack there, we've gone months past that. So where's the information that says, or is there any process for collecting the information that Rich is talking about?
I don't know of any information that we've definitively collected from the businesses.
I'm actually more concerned about the, all the people who have to look at the signs.
I think this came down from the Board of Supervisors, they asked us to look at it and extend it back to them, essentially, so I guess we can either vote yea or nay that we do or don't support this extension, and give it back to the board in that form, and then it, in, as a follow-up, the question has to be asked by both the board and us, do we want to make it permanent, do we want to, you know? And that's another process that we'll have to enter into, either during this period or except right afterward, and we will have information, hopefully, to.
Well, that's a part, we should have information, I think we should just direct staff to try to collect that information, so when we make this decision again to go permanent or not, then we would have a little bit more to go for, then, you know, there would have been some complaints or something like that, and a little qualified area, I guess.
I think we have to go ahead and adopt this, based on the board's request, and get it back to them, so they can act on it. And then I think if we want to send a memo to them suggesting that we get busy at the end of this, and determine whether or not it should or shouldn't be made permanent, is the question, is that.
Or just even certain parts of it be made permanent that, you know, seemed not to be objectionable.
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I have a motion.
Well, I don't know, you made the last one, you're kind of hogging the motion, that's okay, go ahead.
I'm just teasing you.
Don't want to step on any toes here.
No.
I would recommend, though, or would motion, that we find the action is exempt from further review under California Environmental Quality Act, that we approve the proposed ordinance to temporarily suspend the restrictions and prohibitions on particular signs as referenced here, and that we amend section five to have the, the effective period extended to January 15th of 2016. And that, well, January, that would make it 10 months earlier than this date.
So you want to go 10 months longer?
Longer, I want to go a couple of months longer, so through January 15th of 2016, and then that we ask the board to, or I guess that would be a separate, separate, so that's my motion.
Yeah, that's the, okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I think it's too long. I think it's too long, a period to 16th, that's, you know, a year and a half from now, it should be the 15th, should be January 15th, is what I.
You didn't open up this matter.
I know, I was going to do that, I'm sorry.
So we'll hold this off. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about this, and, you know, I'm inclined to just say yes on it, even though it's kind of an abstract rationale for, you know, there really hasn't been any real solid information presented that would say that it needs to be extended other than a recommendation from the Board of Supervisors who ultimately make the decision. And so, at any rate, I think with that reservation, I think I'll go ahead and vote for it, and they will handle another, handle the other part of it.
We're going to postpone voting here for just a minute, and see if there's anyone in the audience that would care to address this issue. We've managed to get right past that. Is there anyone that would care to comment on this issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michael Karabedian with Friends of the North Fork. As I understand this, temporary sales event signs and window signs, what this would do is extend the time that they're permitted temporarily. We have no, I don't think our group would have any interest or concern on that part of it. And if portable signs, and then, then the other signs are current, are prohibited, but allowed, and that's A-frames, lighter-than-air, and portables. If portable means on wheels, I think that's what it means, I mean, those can be pretty tacky, but I don't think we'd raise any questions about them. The portable signs, does A-frame, does that mean the sidewalk A-frames, is that the size of those?
I guess it's a little sandwich, 20 square feet.
Okay, so I don't think, I don't think we'd have concerns about A-frames. However, lighter-than-air signs, we would have grave concerns about those, especially in Sierra Design District, the highway commercial that Sierra designed along Interstate 80, or in, and perhaps in other areas. It seems that that's, that's quite a distinct thing, that you may see those in Roseville, you know, or someplace, but I think that part of the, I guess this goes to the Board of Supervisors from you, but we would certainly be strongly concerned about that. Seems like a really inappropriate thing, and I don't know if there are limits about high, how high they can be in the air, if this has to do with, could be high enough to affect air traffic or something? But anyway, that's, this is a major issue. It seems nonsensical, frankly, but, but for rural areas, but, but I think that's a real problem.
I think the one that I can recall right offhand is Machado's up on Bowman's, that has their blimp flying along during the season, so I'm assuming that's the one, I mean, or that type is what you're kind of applying offensive, right?
Well, I ask you to consider that that's distinctly different than any others we're talking about, which are obviously temporary, small, or could be rolled away or folded up. This is a different animal, I think.
Okay, thank you. George, does Machado's have a sign permit to do that?
Yes, I don't, I don't know the details about it, they are, they do have a lighter-than-air blimp. It has been there for years and years and years and years. My understanding is that it has a legal non-conforming status. I haven't had any questions about it in years and years and years, so I don't remember the details surrounding it, but they are the one business in Auburn that has continuously had a lighter-than-air sign, and it's considered to be legal non-conforming.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering about that, too, Wayne.
Mr. Severson, also, according to a portion of the sign ordinance, for the commercial zones, special purpose, it's section 1754.19, C2 inflated or lighter-than-air signs, it says, blimps, balloons, and similar lighter-than-air or inflated advertising devices shall be allowed only to advertise the sale of agricultural products grown on the same site when the agricultural products are in season, so.
Okay, sort of covers that. You know, I think what we should do, if there's no one else in the audience that's secure to comment, why don't you restate the motion again, we'll go through the, just to cover.
I got a third one after I was hogging them already?
Well, maybe you've memorized it.
Mr. Chair, I will remake my original motion to find this action as exempt from further review under CEQA, and to approve the proposed ordinance as presented in the staff report, to temporarily suspend a certain time and select prohibitions on particular signs and sign materials found in sign regulations as set forth, and to amend section five to have the effective period extended through January 15th of 2016.
Still second to. We have the same, same people. We have a second.
And then, is there any other questions?
No, not question, I want to make a comment, I'm in favor of this on the, on two caveats, one, that we do get this information from staff on if it really helps the businesses, and how many complaints we have, and also that staff be, not part of the motion, but this is what I would like, that they have an outreach to the business community that, for self-regulation on these darn things, so they're, so we don't have to spend too much county enforcement code time going out collecting signs.
I hate to admit it, but that's a good idea.
No, I mean, that's, you can't hire enough people, you hate to admit it?
It's your idea.
Anyway, that's my comment.
No, I think that's a good idea, I think we need to have some information when we get ready to reconsider this, and I think staff would be helpful in acquiring that, and finding out, you know, from the MACs and different sources, and maybe the Chambers and others.
You're right, and I guess.
That might be our second question.
After we do do the vote here, after the roll call, then we can work on, we can work on that one.
Could you poll the board, please?
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes. I guess, do I need to give appeal rights on this, or is this going to the board automatically, and so they would?
It's a recommendation to the board, so you don't need to mention the appeal rights.
No appeal there, okay, thank you. Okay, well, you want to put a footnote on this to the board, just say how you feel about things?
Yes, you know, I think, yeah, before this comes up for a temporary approval again, it seems like there should be some kind of a public process that evaluates whether or not this should be a permanent change to the ordinance, and I guess that would be probably some direction to the planning department from the Board of Supervisors if they so desire to do that, yeah.
Any other comments that should be incorporated into this? I guess, I guess that pretty much sums it up, you know, that we want to.
Make it a, some part of the.
Can staff just include that as a?
Well, one other thing I would like to, to direct staff, is rather than just the businesses be polled, and we all know how well self-regulation works, that all the people around it, the rest of the citizens, have some way to, as opposed to complaining about a particular sign, weigh in on, at the MAC meetings or wherever, how effective these prohibitions have been, and how they either approve or disapprove the new temporary ones we've set up.
Yeah, is that, that's substantially the same thing that I was just proposing?
Pretty much.
I don't know if it needs to be a motion or not, but.
I don't know either, I don't have the recommendation that, you know, besides the businesses, the other side should be heard, that's basically it.
Is that adequate to get that message to the board, George?
Yeah, I, I, do we think this has to be an actual motion?
No, no, I, I think what you've put on the record can be incorporated into the staff report, discussion of your action here, and your, your thoughts as to how to go forward in the future.
Good.
And that we'll also make sure that discussion was about making the process not just geared towards business, but geared to surrounding property owners as well, so it's a balanced, a balanced look at it.
Okay. Good, I think, are we all happy?
I think so.
Thank you.
There's nothing else, I guess, to come before the commission?
Our next, our next meeting now is regularly scheduled for the 13th?
No, 27th.
We don't have one on the 27th of this month.
No, 27th.
Next month.
But do we have one on the 13th, I guess is my question of March? That's a regularly scheduled, we don't even have one a month, and.
I think.
We have a meeting scheduled for the 13th of March.
It looks like February 27th will be canceled.
Right, okay.
It looks like we tentatively have an item, the camel's hump, for March 13th.
But we just knew that.
I'm sorry, that was on March 27th.
We just knew that.
So at this point, we have none at this point on March 13th. March 27th is the camel's hump. Yes, absolutely.
We're adjourned.